Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen meeting of March 9, 2015, to order at 7:06. I do apologize to the audience and those watching at home that we are running a few minutes late this evening. All members are present. Before we start the meeting with the transmitting of the Treasury warrants, I would like to kindly ask that we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'd also kindly ask that Selectman Michael Newhouse lead the pledge. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to reply to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to start with the transmitting of the Treasury warrants, 36, 36A, 37, 37A. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to our first appointment, which was due to start at 7:00. Once again, we do apologize for the delay. It is a public hearing regarding the acceptance of streets at town meeting regarding Lieutenant Buck Drive. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to the manager. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just note that Paul Looney, the town engineer, recommended via a memo back in October of 2014 that the board, the planning board initiate the process for acceptance of Lieutenant Buck Drive. The planning board, by a vote taken at their November 12 meeting, did make a recommendation that the selectmen initiate the layout of the roadway. And they also signed the Mylar map for that subdivision roadway. So this evening, just looking for the board to consider any comments through the public hearing process, then close the hearing and entertain a motion to lay out the full length of Lieutenant Buck Drive and recommend that the roadway be accepted by the voters at the May 2, 2015 annual town meeting, and then endorse the plan by signing off on the Mylar.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions or comments, and then I'm going to turn it over to the audience, as it is a public hearing, to see if anyone's here to speak on this matter. And then, at that point, I'd entertain a motion. Any questions or comments from any board members?
None.
Nothing? Okay. Is anyone here in the audience here to speak on this as a public hearing matter? Yes, if you can please identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name's Kevin McDonald. I just have a few questions and a few comments relative to the performance bond and the guarantee. Can you tell us the bank that was behind that, if there was one?
I don't have that information this evening, no. I'll have to follow up on that.
I think that's a pretty significant issue, isn't it, Mr. Hall?
The work is...
I'm just kind of curious why you wouldn't know who put up the bond to ensure the performance of the road completion.
Because the road work has been done in accordance with the requirements. It has been reviewed by the town engineer. It's been accepted by the town engineer, so the work has been deemed complete.
Has the money been released?
I do not believe it has. It's pending this, but I don't know for certain.
So, I'm just, I guess the other question I had was, by any chance, could it have been a bank that the town has its funds deposited in, Mr. Hall?
He indicated that it's not aware of who the bank is and doesn't have that information. We're happy to get that to you, but we don't know the answer. So I don't feel that that question that you just raised could be adequately answered based on the fact that we don't have that information available.
It's kind of disappointing that it's not able to be answered here. I guess the other comments that I had, I guess it would be probably addressed to you, Chairman. People in town, they're concerned about their investments.
I'm going to interrupt you right there. But if you keep your comments relative to your questions and comments and not speak for other people, but thank you.
It's a fairly expensive neighborhood, and I'm pretty sure that the people in that neighborhood would like their investments protected.
Once again, please do not speak for other residents. Do you specifically, as Kevin McDonald, a resident of the town of Wilmington, have a question or a comment that's pertaining to you and your needs this evening?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought this is a public hearing relative to Lieutenant Buck Drive.
Correct. But I would prefer if you stay away from other people's opinions who are not here to speak for themselves and ask a direct question about the project.
Okay, the direct question is, you're a real estate agent in town, are you not?
Yes, I am, but I don't believe that that's relevant to this conversation.
Well, it's relative if you're voting and you're on boards that are causing taxes to go up. You might not care about it if you're going to get listings if people are forced out of their houses.
Please don't speak, once again, please don't speak for my opinion. That's not what this is about. We're talking about the acceptance of a street.
It's a question directly to you. As a real estate agent, would you profit or benefit from high taxes forcing people to have to move out of their house and move out of town?
Kevin, I sit here as a selectman. I don't sit here as a real estate agent.
Could it be a conflict of interest?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Seeing as, you know, this gentleman, well, I'm sorry, this individual doesn't want to simply accept the parameters of the conversation and insists on widening the scope of it, then I do have a question or a comment. And my comment is that we are here to review the recommendations of the planning director and the planning board and to ascertain whether or not the road has been constructed in accordance with the requirements of the planning board. Apparently, it has. We're now at that point that we accept the roadway. We bring it before town meeting, where the residents will decide whether or not to accept the roadway, and then whether or not the bond will be released. All these questions about which bank holds the bond is absolutely irrelevant. And I would just ask this individual, when he lost the bond on Treasure Island Road, who was the bank then and did it really matter? It doesn't. Either finish the road or you don't. If you don't finish the road, we take the bond. So, I mean, all of this stuff is, it's way off the scope of what we're here to talk about.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to address that last question.
Certainly.
I put up the money myself in the form of cash CDs with the town. The reason why the town took the bond is that the planning board told me that they didn't want the road finished paid until all the houses were built. In the middle of the wintertime, when the asphalt plants are closed, they decided to take a vote to pull my bond because the asphalt wasn't finished paid. So you should get your facts straight, Mr. Newhouse, because I personally think that you're also contributing to people possibly being forced out of their houses due to their high taxes.
Okay, I'm going to stop you right there. I'm going to rule that out of order.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just quickly, for the record, I live at 11 Treasure Hill Road. I understand what Mr. Newhouse is saying. And Kevin, as a neighbor, we worked with you time and time again, gave you, we did. And then up in that neighborhood, that cul-de-sac, I had three little kids, one autistic. There was like about a dozen of 15 kids lived in that cul-de-sac, and it was very dangerous for them to be outside the street. Now, Kevin, it was.
No, it wasn't.
Kevin, it was. And that's all I need to say.
All right. At this time, I'm going to cease any conversation relative to this. I gave you a point of personal privilege. Your questions have been asked and they've been answered. Anyone else have a question or a comment?
Madam Chair, may I? I see some young kids in the audience. I think they're here for the Little League stuff. I just have a quick question for you. Isn't democracy great? Welcome.
Thank you. So at this time, would anyone on the board like to make a motion to grant the acceptance of streets at town meeting?
So move.
Lose motion.
Would you give me a second? Are all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to our next appointment, which is with Joseph Devlin Esquio regarding public hearing to request the transfer and change of the location of all alcohol license of Tucker's Liquors LLC doing business as Main Street Liquors located at 335 Main Street, Unit 1, to Supertarget Liquor of Massachusetts Inc. doing business as Target at 210 Ballad Vale Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please introduce yourselves, just for the record, and welcome here this evening. Thank you.
My name is Joe Devlin. I'm an attorney for the Democas Law Offices in Lynn, Massachusetts, and I represent Supertarget Liquor of Massachusetts Inc. With me is Thomas Leach, who's the store team leader at the Target in Wilmington. He's the treasurer and director of the applicant corporation. He's also the proposed manager of record. If it pleases the chair, I can summarize the transaction before you.
Sure. Thank you.
We're here for a change of location and transfer of the liquor license that's at Tucker's Liquors at 335 Main Street. Paul Nealon, who is the main principal of Tucker's, is also here and joins us in the back. And also with us is Andy Shirelli and Jonathan Kingsley. They're the district leaders for this store, which includes this store, and Jonathan is Andy's counterpart in the asset protection and security department for the district for Target. This store opened in October 2014. They've really enjoyed the opening and been quite successful and hope that it's reciprocated by the town. You know, Target carries a variety of products outside of Massachusetts. Alcohol is a product that they carry. Out of about 1,700 stores, a little over 1,250 carry alcohol in 37 different states. Little bit in Massachusetts, a lot of these large retailers didn't seek alcohol licenses because they were limited to three. That's gone up to five next year. January 1, it goes up to seven, and then four years after that, it goes up to nine. So it enables a larger retailer to get that license and not have a brand confusion within Massachusetts. Because ultimately, what Target wants to do is have the Wilmington experience the same as the Denver, Colorado experience. What Target brings to the table is, you know, the square footage of the proposed sale area is small compared to the overall size of the store. And the inventory is about, the initial inventory is about $70,000 compared to like a liquor store. A well-stocked liquor store will have somewhere between $500,000 and $1 million in inventory. So they're not trying to corner the market here. What they're trying to do is make it convenient for their Target, no pun intended, customer, which is Mrs. Devlin, Mrs. Leach, Mrs. Shirelli, to be able to get unique products at a good price. And they carry about 20 to 25 brands that are exclusive to Target. Mostly, it's vineyards or breweries or manufacturers saying, we want to try this in a limited run. Where can we get the most reach and get some feedback? And so they have an exclusive offer with, exclusive deal with Target. They grow into larger brands. Modern House Wines and Fancy Pants are two that are of some renown now that have grown into larger brands. We have met with Chief Pagonis and really appreciated his time and his comments and suggestions. Hopefully, we addressed them. And, you know, the security here, it's a major retailer. They spend more on security probably than, you know, most of the liquor stores in the North Shore and Merrimack Valley area combined. But, you know, that's, you know, that's their main goal, is a safe service of alcohol. Just one example is they have 100% carding policy, but not only that, you have to swipe a card, an ID, through the point-of-sale system in order for that alcohol to be rung through. So not only does it have to be, an ID has to be presented by every customer every time, it has to swipe. And if it doesn't, even if there's something wrong with the magnetic strip, they won't serve to that person because the point-of-sale system won't let them do it. All four of us are here to answer any questions you might have and...
One question that comes to mind, just in line with your talking of swiping the ID, can you talk about if you have an employee that works for Target that is not of age to handle the purchase of alcohol?
They have to check in to their register at the beginning with their specific ID number. And if they're under 18, the register won't let alcohol get processed. They're also trained, if someone comes to the aisle, to identify it ahead of time and call a manager over to handle the alcohol and move the person to a different aisle where somebody over, 18 and over, is there.
Okay. Okay. At this time, I'll open up to any board members for questions and comments. Anything on my right?
I see with the police chief's recommendation to us, it references recommendations regarding staffing and security measures. I assume that the manager has that for us, or am I missing it in my package? Just want to make sure that we incorporate any such recommendations, so. Right, that's the, I've reviewed the floor plans submitted by the applicant and have made appropriate recommendations regarding additional staffing and security measures to which they have agreed. So is that, and maybe I should direct that question through you to the chief. What are we incorporating if we are to approve this license? What recommendations are you referring to in here that you said you've given to these folks? How do we incorporate that into it?
I set it in a separate cover. The agreements would be that they would add additional staff. Right now, they have certain staffing for security. They would add additional staff because of that product being in the building. They would change some camera locations. They would put a very prominent signage up that there is video surveillance in that area for those different cases, especially for the, off the front end aisle. They would remove things from the end aisles and keep them contained in there so that we're trying to prohibit the walk-through of people that don't need to be in that area. So it would be specific signage that would direct people to stay away unless they were in there for a purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
So with that, Mike, before you continue on, just, we were talking specifically about security, but do you want to just run through the recommendations that you received, Jeff? And then I'll turn it back over to you.
Yes. The chief indicates that he's reviewed the application for the transfer of the alcohol, all alcohol package store license from Tucker's Liquor LLC to Supertarget Liquors of Massachusetts. Reviewed the floor plans submitted by the applicant and have made appropriate recommendations regarding additional staffing and security measures to which they have agreed. And as the chief outlined, there are particular issues that he has discussed with the management at Tucker's. Also, Al Spalding, building inspector, I have reviewed the above-mentioned application. Have no outstanding zoning issues. The health director, Shelley Newhouse, I recommend approval of the application of Target for transfer and change of location of the all-alcohol package store license of Tucker's Liquor LLC DBA Main Street Liquors to Supertarget Liquors of Mass DBA Target 210 Ballad Vale Street. Are those other recommendations? The butters cars. Yes, those have been submitted.
Yes, those were submitted before the meeting. Okay.
Just one question I would ask. Given the recent change in law that permits alcoholic, alcohol establishments to open on Sundays beyond the 12 to 5, there's a provision that provides for opening from 10 to 7. It's not clear to me as to what the intended hours are on Sunday. If you could just confirm what your Sunday hours would be for sale of alcohol?
Your hours are 8 to 9 on Sunday, correct?
Yes.
So it would be 10 o'clock to, there is no end cap from the state point of view on the time that you can serve on Sundays. It doesn't end at 7 o'clock, but if the town of Wilmington does have a requirement that alcohol sales end at 7, then, you know, they're going to have to comply with the town's regulations.
We just comply with the state requirements, so to the extent that it goes beyond the 7 o'clock. As you know, the ability to extend the sale of alcohol on Sundays is something that the applicant would simply notify the board of. There is no ability of the licensing authority to necessarily approve or deny that provision, but we do have to put the ABCC on notice.
They had anticipated starting at 10 o'clock on Sundays.
Okay.
It also blocks at a point-of-sale as well. You can't, you can't ring it outside the guideline. It's in the system, so you can't. Somebody could inadvertently ring it outside of the state guidelines. It won't let you.
No, they punch in the hours, allowable hours into the point-of-sale system, and it doesn't let any product go through outside of those hours.
Okay.
Okay. Yep, just going to stop back with Michael and work through if that's okay.
I may have another comment, but by all means, any other questions?
Anything, Kevin?
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I personally don't have a problem with the transfer, and I just want to, obviously, from listening to the information, obviously, it's the big Supertarget that's going to have the alcohol license to serve the, you know, liquor store. I didn't think it was, obviously, from listening, it wasn't going to be a separate building. It's going to be in the main store, correct? And I'm a Market Basket shopper, always have, always will be, but I did go to Wegmans, and I noticed they serve, or they also distribute alcohol, hot liquor and beer and wine. And if you could educate me for a quick second, I believe the laws are different in Massachusetts as opposed to New Hampshire. What is it, so many supermarkets, so many Targets in the Commonwealth allowed to serve this? Because I know this became an issue when I remember reading something in the Lowell Sun. And I'm just curious how they're able to do this. I thought maybe only one or two Targets or one or two Walmarts in the Commonwealth could actually serve, distribute and sell.
It's actually a popular misconception because of the special supermarket license that came, you know, was proposed, I think around 2006, to give supermarkets the unlimited ability to sell wine. So there are state legislators that, legislators that I know that voted on this and still say, oh, well, how is that possible? The only thing that's prevented large, regional, and it affects Market Basket as well, it affects Wegmans. It's actually one of the reasons Wegmans came into Massachusetts. The only thing that affected it was you could only have three, any person, firm, entity, group of people working in concert up until, a couple years ago, until 2000, January 1, 2012, could only have three licenses combined. So a place like Target, or Walmart, or Wegmans, which wasn't here, or Market Basket, or Shores, or Stop &amp; Shop, could only have three. And so a lot of those companies made the decision, they would come, they'd give me a call, they'd explore, they'd make sure that that was accurate, and that was, there was no workaround. And then they would decide, okay, we might carry this throughout the rest of the country, and that is our brand identity. But in Massachusetts, and I've had this explained by like 10 different retailers, in Massachusetts, we don't want to just get three. Some did. CBS and Rite Aid, Rite Aid has had three. They bought Brooks Pharmacy and had two, and then they had their own third. But they didn't want to have brand confusion. So they didn't want to have, you know, the customer in Wilmington, you know, different from the customer in Woburn and being, you know, where can I get this? Can I get this? Can I? So what I was told was with these, this increase in the number that any one entity could have, that that now they say, okay, there's, you know, 14 Targets in Massachusetts. If by 2020, nine of them can have alcohol, then that's not going to be confusing to the mass customer. And ultimately, what we really want is the mass customer to be able to go into, you know, Tucson, Arizona, Supertarget and find the exact same product. In fact, it's almost in the exact same place. That if there's another Supertarget in this area and you go that's selling alcohol, it's going to be, it's going to be sold right about in the same spot. So that's, that's actually what has piqued the interest. The Wal, there's a Walgreens in Downtown Crossing in Boston that has alcohol sales now. And, you know, it's this increase that by 2000, January 1, 2020, you can have nine. And the thought is that it'll kind of liberalize after that as well. And then, you know, the Massachusetts will be comfortable with the idea that, you know, not limiting it, so.
I appreciate the education. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just curious on that. Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question that's also kind of educational in nature. I have, again, like Mr. McCoy, I have no reason to oppose this. In fact, I'm likely to approve. But as long as you're here, is it Mr. Devlin, right? You were talking about how Target is going to approach this, and you want to sort of create a consistency in the Target store in Wilmington that exists in Minnesota and that will exist in other Target stores. I'm a member, or a customer of BJ's in Woburn, and they have sort of, I don't call it a cage, but a section for alcohol with a separate cashier. And I think that virtually every BJ's, and I don't know how many there are in Massachusetts, but I think they're somehow getting beyond this three-license rule. Do they set up a separate enterprise within the store? Is it a store within a store?
They actually, they lease that space to a separate operator.
Okay.
And I, I don't represent that separate operator, but I know who one of the principals are, and he's got nothing to do with, he opposed BJ's and said, yeah, I bet you, and I don't represent BJ's, but at some, somewhere, they have three and probably five now. The challenge is going from three to five is finding the licenses. They didn't increase the quota. They didn't increase, you know, they didn't, a lot of package stores are successful, and that's too high of a price point to buy out the entire location. So that, and that's, you know, I don't represent BJ's, but I bet you there are BJ's out there and Coscos out there that have it integrated up to three or five, or they're on the search for the other two. But I do know that the ones that are separately registered are owned by a different entity.
Makes sense. I understand. And I'll just, I'll close by something. Mr. Nealon, I guess I'm kind of sorry that that didn't work out at Tucker's, but thank you very much for taking a swing at it to try to keep that open, and we wish you success in your other endeavors.
So having heard questions and comments from the board, I do recognize that there are representatives here from Tucker's. I certainly, you don't have to, but you're certainly welcome to make any comments. I know you're good, okay? And obviously, this is a public hearing, so if anyone has any questions or comments in the audience before going to a vote. Yes?
It appears as though they're two separate entities. I just have a few questions. How much does a liquor license cost to an entity that they have to pay to the town of Wilmington? And what type of mechanism, in terms of financial mechanism, is in place so that the taxpayers that are funding a police department are alleviated some money in taxes due to drunk driving, vehicular homicides? Anything like that associated with alcohol? What type of thing is in place so that we, the taxpayers have some type of economic benefit? But I'd like to have the question asked as far as how much does a liquor license cost for an entity?
Billy, what is the fee? Seventeen fifty is the fee.
Seventeen fifty, like 1,750 or 17 dollars and 50 cents, Mr. Hall?
Well, what would you guess?
Mr. Hall, you're the town manager that makes a six-figure salary. I would like to have some answers tonight. I would think that you have come prepared for the meeting.
$1,750, Mr. McDonald.
And just maybe Target could answer this question. Does, will Target be paying the entity for their liquor license? Is that how it works?
You choose to respond.
Target is purchasing, you know, yes, purchasing the license.
So how many licenses out there in Wilmington?
There are a total of 22 licenses of various sorts. There are five package licenses, all of which are taken.
And how long has this particular license been in effect for, Mr. Hall?
This particular license, I don't know, two or three years. I don't know that number offhand.
Okay. I guess, I guess one of the other questions I had is, for example, like Mr. McCoy, just last meeting, I mentioned that he sold his restaurant, but he retained his liquor license.
Mr. McDonald, I'm going to stop you right there.
We'd just like to get a little education like you guys were trying to get.
You're on a fishing expedition to try and create a platform, and there's, there's an exchange between two parties here. You know, we have a deal here, and we're trying to transfer the license. We've had positive recommendations. We've had board questions. We've had a full presentation. It is clear that you are just arbitrarily trying to pull all of this trivia-type questions out of thin air.
You haven't answered a question because you've come prepared.
No, because it's not that I haven't come prepared. It's just you want to ask several questions just to try and deflect from the business that's at hand, to try and put on a show. I'm trying to give you, that's not what we're here to discuss. Tonight's discussion is not about the police budget. That's for town meeting, which we... is not about the police budget. That's for town meeting, which we look forward to seeing you there.
I believe that you guys discussed some collective bargaining, but it's not outside of the house.
Mr. McDonald, that is not the subject matter. I'm gonna rule your comments out of order. I have tried to the best of my ability to be cordial and allow you the opportunity to speak because it's a public hearing. I believe that you are off track and you are off point. Do you have a specific question that cannot be answered? Do you, sir, have come unprepared? Because if you were prepared, you would've gone ahead of time. This agenda has been posted well in advance, and so you wanna just pull these random questions and spot people with questions and know that some research needs to be required. If you wanna submit your questions in writing, we'd be happy to take that as an information request and respond to it in the timeframe that's allotted.
It was a pointed question. What type of economic mechanism is in place so that the taxpayers of Wilmington aren't incurring high costs in taxes to pay for policing for drunk driving issues?
That is not, that is not relevant to-
You don't have, you don't have a mechanism. Just say no, I don't have anything.
I'm not gonna say any, I'm not gonna answer the question.
If you can.
I'm choosing not to answer the question. I don't believe that it's relevant to the subject matter this evening.
If you can, you don't come prepared.
Okay, I'm gonna bring this conversation to a close. Does anyone else have a comment or a question? Okay, at this time, we're gonna close the public hearing. Okay? Would anyone like to make a motion to grant the transfer of the liquor licenses itemized?
I'd make the motion to transfer the legal license as described by you as chairman and the town manager.
Okay, motions made. Do we have a second?
I get-
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you very much. Thank you. Take care. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. Good to see you.
What is it?
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Just gonna give it a brief moment just to change over. Thank you very much. Take care. Thank you. At this time, we're gonna move on to our next appointment, which is with Brian Kane, Vice President, and Hayden Kane of the Wilmington Little League, with reference to the request to conduct a parade on Saturday, April 18th, 2015, from the Town Common to the Rotary Park, in conjunction with opening day ceremonies. Welcome this evening, and I appreciate your patience as we are clearly running off schedule. And I do see that you have your trusted advisor and son and a member of the Wilmington Little League to help support you in this request. And appreciate you being here, and hopefully we can get you home to bed in a reasonable hour, so you can get your homework done and have a great day at school tomorrow. So I'll turn it over to you, Brian, to talk about your request. And certainly, if Hayden has any comments that he would like to make, we certainly would love to hear from you as well.
Okay. Well, good evening, and thanks for having us tonight with a few less people than I had the last time I was here. But it's starting to feel a little like baseball weather today, so hopefully we can get the snow melted and have our opening day parade. This will be our seventh year having the parade. The date we are asking the board for is Saturday, April 18th. If that date is rained out, which we hope not, knock on wood, we would like the makeup date to be Sunday, April 19th. One more possible issue contingency, if we know in advance that the fields will not be ready due to the, the snow we've had this winter, that weekend, we would ask for the following Sunday, April 26th, if the fields are not ready the weekend of the 18th. Hayden will now give you an overview of what this year's parade will entail.
So this year, the parade's going to leave from the Fourth of July Building at 9:30 and continue down Middlesex Ave to Rotary Park, where we will have our opening day ceremonies, followed by our opening day game between the Orioles and the Tigers. This year, the Kiwanis will also be serving and cooking hot dogs after the game, after the ceremonies.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
And again, we, you know, Wilmington Little League, we really appreciate the support of the town, the DPW, the police and fire, and obviously, you know, this board and town manager, I know, you know, just you're all very supportive, come every year, and you all have ties to the league, which is great. And, you know, it should be hopefully a great day.
Thank you. Any questions or conflicts or anything on the town?
No, the date's been checked. There's no conflict.
And then the other date that was mentioned, do we still need to check that?
I would confirm, but I don't anticipate a problem that, so the following week is election. On Saturday, but nothing on the following day, so.
Okay. All right. So would anyone like to make a motion to grant the request?
I'll make that motion if, if I may. Hayden, you did a wonderful job. That was a great presentation, and you look fantastic. I'll make the motion that we accept Hayden's proposal for the parade.
Okay, motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it.
Thank you very much. Good night. Okay, 7:30, appointment, Board of Selectmen to discuss the review of the proposed town meeting warrant.
Madam Chair, as you know, the warrant was presented to the board last week. There are 56 articles on the warrant. There have been no changes to the warrant itself since the presentation. I went through each of the articles last week. I don't, is the board looking to review them again, or what is your pleasure?
From my standpoint, I mean, you've gone over them. I'm just putting my opinion out there. If there are any language changes that you, that, in other words, this read through is, if there's anything that's different from the last time we read it, I would be interested in just maybe highlighting any of the edits that you made so that we, we know the proposed changes. If you feel that they're more administrative and minor in detail, and the sum and substance of the articles are the same, but it's just a word change here or there, that doesn't change the nature of, of the warrant article, then I'm fine with it. I don't know what the pleasure of everyone else is.
The, the one article that was modified to some measure to really be consistent with the town's process for declaration of surplus property, Article 36, you will recall, is the intention to sell the Butter's Farm property. The way it was originally drafted, we did modify to, to make it consistent with the articles that we've presented in the past, see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, convey, otherwise dispose of that certain property and improvements thereto and interests thereon, known as Butter's Farm, located at 165 Chestnut Street in Wilmington, identified as Assessors Map 15, PSL 13, and more particularly described by the deed recorded at Middlesex Registry, A Deeds Northern District Book 20621, page 233, subject to the preservation restrictions recorded at said registry book 20826, page 143, and such other terms, conditions, considerations and conditions and restrictions as the Board of Selectmen deem advisable or take any action, related action. That was, other than some minor administrative adjustments to words, that was the only change of any consequence to any of the articles. Obviously, the petition articles as they are submitted.
Does anyone need more information than what's been provided this evening, or does everyone on the board feel comfortable with the information you've received?
I'm okay now. I look forward to the Joint Finance Committee and Planning Board when we can sort of delve in. I'm sure there'll be opportunity to discuss them in greater detail, but for our purposes tonight, I'm satisfied with what I've read.
Okay. With that being said, let's move on to communications, please.
Okay, communications. The first item is a memorandum to the board from me summarizing a meeting that was held with the New England Trans Rail. This meeting occurred last week. A number of department personnel attended. Representatives from New England Trans Rail were Robert Jones III and Ronald Klemmner, both managing principals with NET. We had Mike Woods, Shelley Newhouse, Valerie Gingrich, Dan Deutsch, and Joel Trefalo from GeoInsight. New England Trans Rail plans to purchase the entire property from Olin and construct a rail-to-truck transloading operation using approximately 32 acres of the 50-plus acre site. The rail line on the westerly side of the property is proposed for offloading of commodities in boxcars to tractor-trailer trucks. The rail line to the east of the site is proposed for offloading of non-liquid commodities from tanker cars. Items might include plastic pellets and salt, magnesium chloride. While NET did not establish the limits of the commodities they would transport, the representatives stated that the solid waste transfer and transfer of oil slash petroleum are off the table, quote. Mr. Klemmner stated that they are planning to establish an area to service both their own railcars and railcars owned by other parties. Apparently, as a requirement of EPA, most of the activities utilize portions, actively utilize portions of the site would have an impervious surface to guard against groundwater contamination. The area designated for offloading of tanker cars is planned to be impervious and be surrounded by a burn intended to contain any potential spill. The plan also calls for the establishment, or the establishing of multiple access points to enable a testing of groundwater or extraction measures in the future if required by EPA. It is expected that 20 to 25 railcars will come into the site daily, six days per week. Each railcar is expected to contain roughly three and a half truckloads of material. Railcars could arrive at the site between 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Trucks would arrive at the site between 5:30 AM and 6:00 AM to transfer the material and leave the site for their final destination with an estimated two hour, within two hours of Wilmington. Trucks would return and reload for a second delivery, with truck operations expected to conclude by about 4:00 PM each day. Using their estimates, it appears there would be roughly 90 trucks leaving twice per day, or approximately 180 truck trips per day. Mr. Klemmner stated that about 99% of the trucks will seek to access Interstate Route 93 via Eames Street to Woburn Street to Presidential Way to Woburn. Their service areas are businesses north of Massachusetts Turnpike, from Route 495 easterly and southern New Hampshire. And I provided a map of the site. New England Trans Rail is awaiting the final terms being discussed between EPA and the Olin Corporation. It appears that EPA now believes that, given the well-documented extent of residual contaminants and the expansive EPA risk assessment, that the property is safe for commercial use. Within 30 days, a receipt of the notice that resolution has been achieved, NET is expected to refile with the Federal Surface Transportation Board to obtain authorization from the proposed, for the proposed project. If NET refiles with the STB, it is expected that an environmental assessment of the project would be required. There are a number of issues of concern, including the transloading of unspecified range of materials on a superfund site, the hours of operation and associated noise, the impact of daily trucks, six days per week, on existing traffic in that area, and the ability of tractor-trailer trucks to safely negotiate the hairpin turn from Eames Street to Woburn Street to access Presidential Way and Interstate 93.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Hall, on page two in the second paragraph, just, there's a sentence that I struggled with when I read this, and then I was hoping that it would become clear when you read it, and it didn't. And it's me, I'm sure it's me, not you. Your second sentence says, "It appears that EPA now believes that, given the well-documented extent of residual contamination and the expansive EPA risk assessment, that the property is safe for commercial use." So is that, are you suggesting that EPA has somewhere along the line either changed or evolved in their thinking about the usefulness or the potential usefulness of the property, even in spite of the fact that it's, that it has a high level of residual contamination from previous owners?
That's my understanding in speaking with Jim DiLorenzo from EPA, that based upon the body of knowledge that's been developed about this property, you know, they, EPA believes that it's reasonable to allow some measure of commercial use. I think they, and I don't wanna certainly speak for EPA, but I think there's, you know, there's some limits in terms of how long they can freeze a piece of property, so to speak, from being redeveloped. And it appears, again, I don't wanna speak for EPA, that they've reached the conclusion that the property can be sold for commercial use.
And if I may, thank you for helping me understand that terminology or that statement. You also mentioned that the gentleman, I forget whose name, doesn't really matter, but they said, "While NET did not establish the limits of the commodities they would transport, they stated that solid waste transfer and transfer of oil or petroleum are off the table." Do we, the town, or DEP, or EPA, or anybody have any influence or ability to get that in writing and mandate that that be the case? I mean, if there, if this happens between two parties, you know, I really love the idea of being able to have some say over what kind of materials are transporting over our roads and through our town, because I have the same concerns that you articulated very well about that hairpin turn at Eames to Woburn Street and, you know, the traffic and all the other things. So is, do you know what, to what degree we have influence over the nature of the materials that can go through?
That was one of the issues that, that we tried to ferret out at the meeting, as to what degree they had any particular limits. They, the response basically was that as a commercial enterprise, that anything that, you know, was permissible, they would essentially keep their options open. To the extent that they offered that limited caveat, it's, that would be something I'd certainly wanna have a conversation with town council as to whether or not there's any ability for us to, you know, mandate that. I don't offhand know that there is, you know, but certainly, from my perspective, one of the concerns is just the fact that there is no, well, there's, it's not known specifically over the long haul or even the short term, what types of material they'll be bringing in there.
Yeah, there's a laundry list of concerns. You've identified them here, but I'd love to hear and understand council's opinion about our ability to exercise some, some controls or some influence over this. So, yeah, when, when you get more information, certainly I'd be, welcome you sharing it with us.
Yes.
Madam Chair, thank you. I do agree with the town manager. We need town council involved. I've served on the board for a long period of time, and it's really hard to swallow what I'm hearing, saying that it may be okay for commercial use. I think the bottom line is we want less contamination on that site, not more contamination. And I've seen this Trans Rail back and forth and back and forth. And I'll say it again, we had people to oppose any construction on that site. At one time, there was a company that wanted to put a beverage distribution, soft drinks, you know, recycle, soft drinks. And those folks that were opposed to this were opposed to that. I think that would've been a better fit than what EPA's saying right now. But I really find that hard to accept this now, after hearing how bad that site was. And once again, we want less contamination, not more contamination on that site. And I believe the residents feel the same way. So I think town council needs to get involved and see what avenues that we have to protect our community.
Yes.
Most of what I would have to offer has already been said by my colleagues. I would just, just add to that, that in my observations, I don't believe that historically, you know, in the last 20, 30 years, I'm not aware of any issue in town that had such unanimous, you know, where the entire town was unanimous in its thinking that this facility is not good for the town. I mean, it's just, nobody disagreed with that. And I assume that we all still have that opinion, so we'll, we'll do everything we can.
So in that direction, what are the next steps, Jeff, in terms of, you know, working this through from the town side? You know, are there follow-on meetings? You know, are there follow-on meetings? You talked about town council. You know, are you still working to develop a team with your leadership team within Town Hall, and you'll get back to us?
Well, I think the real issue is looking at what the town's options are in terms of, you know, pursuing, opposing this particular project. And that remains to be seen, but that'll be something we'll be looking at.
Yeah. I mean, from my standpoint, I don't want to speak for the members of the board, but I would tend to believe that, you know, I'm saying it in a different way, is that, you know, I'm all for economic development and smart economic development, but I feel like this is like taking steps back, and it's almost like a regression back to all the work that's been done to try and deal with the Olin site, that we're almost, you know, going back to the potential drawing board if this doesn't go well. And, you know, I'm also curious, too, have we received any sort of communication from the city of Woburn? You know, when they've had projects, we've sent memorandums over regarding concerns about truck routes, and it sounds like, you know, we're responsible for 01887, but, you know, 180 truck trips per day that are going to be going down that street. And curious if we've heard any, you know, resident feedback, or if we do get any resident feedback from the town of Wilmington, and if we've heard from our neighbors at all, if they've gotten wind of this project.
No, I think it's too early. Well, I suspect they're simply not aware of it to this point. Certainly, you know, be in touch with representatives from Woburn, but to this point, I, as far as I know, they aren't aware of it.
Okay. Does anyone have anything further?
Maybe. Is there merit to the idea, or would there -- would it help us to involve people from the State House, you know, to lend some influence or convey a message maybe at a little bit higher decibel to EPA?
I would like to call Mr. Woburn.
I mean, I don't know. At the end of the day, it's really a federal issue, and as was the case previously, you know, the Surface Transportation Board ultimately is the authority that will sign off on this, so to speak. So it really, I think, would involve our federal delegation. And, you know, obviously, we're monitoring the STB website, because as soon as this -- it appears that as soon as whatever issues are outstanding between Olin and EPA are addressed, then New England Trans Rail is prepared to go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the next one.
Next is the Communication from Massachusetts Municipal Association. This is with regard to Governor Baker's proposed budget. His budget is a $38.1 billion, 2016 budget increase over all expenditures by 3%. This is in spite of the $1.5 billion structural budget deficit that currently exists at the state. You know, to the town's fortune, and I guess the municipalities and the Commonwealth, the governor's budget does include $34 million, an increase in unrestricted general government aid, and $105.3 million in additional assistance for Chapter 70, which is a school aid. The amount of -- overall amount of unrestricted government aid throughout the Commonwealth would be $979.8 million, and then the -- which would reflect a 3.6% increase. So from the town's perspective, this is certainly helpful, the net effect to us at this point. And obviously, this is the governor's budget. It will invariably be modified or debated, or certainly the House and Senate will have their own versions. But at this point, based upon the governor's budget, the town would receive a net increase of $112,223. That's a reflection of the increases through this budget, as well as the statutory charges, some adjustments there.
If the governor's budget were to pass?
If the governor's budget were to pass, of course, you know, there's a whole process that goes on between now and the end of the fiscal year. It's really too early to tell. We have correspondence from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, and this addresses the ability for establishments that are continuing care retirement communities to have on-premises licenses for the sale and serving of alcohol. So they would be treated as other retail establishments. They would have to adhere to the same limits that we talked about earlier in terms of the number of licenses in a community. So this is just an advisory that this opportunity now exists for continuing care retirement Next on the correspondence is correspondence from Jill Reddish from Verizon, and it just notes that on or after April 16th, the following channels will be removed. Fox College Sports Atlantic, Channel 300, Fox College Football -- Fox College Sports Central, Channel 301, and then Fox College Sports Pacific, 302. Then notes Verizon will notify subscribers. Access to Files TV channel lineup is available 24/7 online. And that is it for correspondence.
Okay. Moving on to Board to Consider, please.
The first item under Board to Consider is a request of Dana Burnham, the president of Wilmington Farmers Market, for establishment of a farmers market at the Swain Green, beginning Sunday, June 14th through October 11th of 2015. They're looking to adjust their hours. Last year, they went from 10:30 to 1:30. This year, they're looking to go from 10 to 11.
10 to 1.
I'm sorry, 10 to 1.
Any recommendations, any town concerns?
There are no issues there in terms of times.
Would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request?
Moved.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Just two agreements for the board to sign.
Moving on to the next Board to Consider, please.
Board to Consider, closing the warrant and signing the warrant.
Okay, we brought that up under Communications previously, or actually, one of our appointments. Any questions or comments? Would anyone like to make a motion to close and sign the warrant?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. So before we move into public comments, I just wanted to just make a general statement to the board, my colleagues, and to the General Assembly here, and to those at home. I believe it was back in 2002, and Mr. McCoy, correct me if I'm wrong, that you had instituted public comments, and that was intended for residents to be able to have their selectmen available to them to come in, ask a general question, or if they were stuck on something that they couldn't navigate through. I think the phrase was used, "the maze of town government." And obviously, technology has enhanced. We have a website. We have Town Hall offers office hours from, you know, Monday through Friday during extended periods of time. That, to me, was the intent for public comments. So I want to open that up. I want to give everyone an opportunity to speak. I'd kindly ask that you keep that in mind, if you can keep your comments limited, your questions limited, and keep them on topic. We'll do our best to try and answer your questions. If we can't, we'll take the information. We'll get the information for you. Like to have the comments to be civil and respectful, and I would kindly ask that if anyone were to make comments, that you please identify yourself and provide your address for the record. So having said that, do we have any public comments? Yes.
Kevin McDonald, 140, Endover Street, Wilmington. Three basic issues relative to the agenda tonight. First one, Mr. Hall. I put in a public record request for contracts for the high school, or relative to the new high school, one of which was the demolition of the gym. I got back information that D'Arenzo got the contract for $6 million to knock down the gym. I'd like to get a clarification. Can you tell us what the amount is to knock down the old high school?
I don't have that figure in front of me. I don't this evening, but I can certainly find out.
Okay. But that $6 million, was that just to knock down the gym, or was that the whole project?
You know, I don't know. I'd have to get back to you.
Okay. And relative to the Trans Rail project, everybody in town would like a clean site. Personally, I'd like to see the Olin site completely decontaminated. We don't really know how the Surface Transportation Board is going to act, but if I can just give a hypothetical and say, if New England Trans Rail does get approved, the town will be stuck with that. How can the town benefit from that? And what I'd like to just talk about is the last meeting where you discussed entering into a 10-year contract to pick up trash. I've talked to several people in town. There's not one single person that I talked to that was not upset with the fact that they were switching over to 95-gallon trash containers. I personally think that an elderly person who's going to have to bring a full container of trash down a driveway that's, you know, full of snow is really very difficult. I think it's probably okay for the city. And to just piggyback on that, I don't think it's in the best interest of the town to enter into a 10-year contract.
So we were talking about the New England Trans Rail. Did you have?
My comments are relative to that.
Okay.
Okay? I don't think it's in the best interest of the town to enter into a 10-year contract with anybody, okay? Especially if New England Trans Rail is coming here and we get stuck with them. Because there's the potential where the town could save money bringing its trash to Trans Rail. If we're stuck with it, okay, which I hope we're not, but if we're stuck with it, why don't we try to see if we can benefit from it by reducing our trash costs? But if you enter into a 10-year contract with somebody, okay, you're going to give up that benefit. And the other issue is, I have four articles on the town meeting, one of which is to suspend all funding for the Yentile Farm. I was at the engineering office, and I got a plan. It was a very simple plan that a high school student on a computer could have drawn. I was told that we paid $31,000 to that company for that plan, but then when it came to the contract time for engineering, when I went to the meeting, you folks said that they were not even considered to participate in that. You really weren't serious about hiring that company. We appropriate a $50,000.
Excuse me. What you're saying is not accurate. What you just said is not accurate.
I was at the meeting, and basically, Mr. Hall said, I think it was Mr. Hall, it could have been somebody else, but said, you know, I think it was Waterfield or something like that, you know, they weren't really seriously considered.
No. What you're saying is absolutely not factual information.
Okay, well, you entered into what, close to a $268,000 contract for engineering, okay? You already spent $31,000.
That's not accurate either.
The project's kind of a disaster, Judy, okay?
That's your opinion.
So the reason why I'm bringing it -- yeah, it is my opinion.
That's your opinion. Move on. Do you have a question?
Well, the reason I'm bringing that up is because my article suspends all funding for that project.
Right, which you're going to have an opportunity at town meeting to bring that before the town.
And this meeting is relative to town meeting warrant articles, which is why my discussion is specifically tailored to your agenda. I'm just letting you know, I have an article.
Where is that?
Two marquee rings.
We have it here. We have it here.
Yeah, and I just wanted to let you know that, and the people at home know, that Essex Agricultural Technical School is building two rings.
You're getting on track.
It's relative to my article, which is not a town thing.
Right, which you are going to have. You're going to have the joint meeting and the town meeting to bring that up. We're very well aware of your article, and we look forward to hearing your presentation.
And I'm very well aware that this project is appearing to be a tremendous financial disaster.
That's your opinion.
Well, when you spend $31,000 for a plan at a high school.
That's your opinion. Let's move away. Let's move on to questions and comments. Do you have a question?
I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to new business and committee reports. I'll start to my right.
Nothing here.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
I'm good, Madam Chair.
I have no committee report. I just want to, you know, we all had the opportunity last Tuesday to be at the grand opening of the high school. And I thought, you know, in the context of really positive investments that the town has made for itself, for its future, last Tuesday was quite special. It was last Tuesday, right? I think it was.
24.
The weeks kind of blend in after a little while. But anyway, at the grand opening, which was very recent, the kids were really excited to go in. You could see their zeal, and it was such a positive morning. I had the opportunity finally to see the inside of the space, and it's so very impressive. So I just wanted to pay, I guess, tribute to the high school building committee and all the parties that were involved in making that to come to fruition, the educational staff at the high school and throughout the entire district for getting everything in place in a really short period of time over the course of the week vacation, to have that place ready for education. And my daughter is there, and she continues to tell me, when she comes home every evening, how wonderful the space is in comparison to where they were. So again, it was just, I wanted to just sort of put it on the table and recognize all those involved and say thank you, but also really just say that the town benefited greatly, and it was great to be there together with all of you as well. So that's all.
Well, thank you for bringing that up. Certainly, it was a huge epic milestone achievement for the town, and I think it's, you see two or three young faces here in the crowd that really solidifies why I'm sure a lot of us are doing what we're doing. And that's the positive message, the Little League parades and those types of things. And I think, you know, comes time for public comments and committee reports, and we're -- I'm feeling like I'm shying away just to kind of move on, because there's a negative pulse, but there's a lot of positive things going on here in town. And here's a great example of these three young men with their parents here, and then obviously, the opening of the new school. So thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for bringing that up, Michael, because it is certainly a prominent accomplishment for the town. So that's all I have on that, and let's move on to important dates.
The next Yentile Farm Development Committee is March 10th, tomorrow evening, 6:00 PM here in Room 9. High School Building Committee, Room 9, 6:30 on March 16th. March 18th is the Finance Committee Planning Board Joint Public Hearing relative to the warrant in the annual town meeting. Town Hall Auditorium, 7:00 PM. March 19th is the deadline for rookies T-ball registration. Next meeting of the Board of Selectmen is March 23rd. April 4th is the Rabies Clinic Public Buildings, noon to 2:00. April 4th is the Easter Egg Hunt Town Common, 2:00 PM. And March 6th is the last day to register to vote at the annual town -- in the town elections and town meeting. Town Clerk's Office will be open 8:30 AM to 8:00 PM.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any motion's been made. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.